That burns and scalders.
Yes, it does.
She decided she was gonna go inside. And then she's sitting there and she said, no, it's just that. Yeah, damn.
Morning. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, July 2, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. for the purpose of a regular meeting. Call the roll.
Swire?
Here.
Asher?
Here.
Engelman?
Here.
Like to ask everyone to join in on the play. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for accommodating my schedule. I appreciate it. We will go to, I'd like to move to approve the minutes for the June 18, 2024, regular trustee meeting.
Second?
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Do you guys recall how many people were in attendance, approximately? The usual?
I don't even think the...
Five. Twenty.
That kind of coincides with the sign and sheet.
Five.
Five. Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the June 26, 2024, special meeting?
Second?
Discussion, Martha, the third last paragraph, the time going into executive session is 4:31 p.m. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the June 27, 2024, special trustee meeting?
Second.
Second, discussion?
Yes, I just want to, I have a correction on, and I'll give you the verbiage, Martha.
Thank you.
On page two, the second complete sentence that starts out saying, Ms. Engelman stated, Becker Signs discuss the cost of a permit. There's an exemption as long as it's used for township purposes, so if they are considering Becker Signs. So I will strike if they are considering Becker Signs and replace it when considering the purchase of the sign. Because it's not tied to. So I'll give you the verbiage on that.
Thank you.
Second amendment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Martha?
Couple resolutions. The first one is a resolution approving amended certificate number two, dated June 21, 2024, with a amount of $9,962,285.82. This accommodates the ARPA interest.
So moved.
Second.
Second, call the roll, please.
Swire?
Yes?
Asher?
Yes.
Engelman?
Yes.
A second resolution is for approval of the amended permanent appropriations with the new amended certificate numbers.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Yes?
Asher?
Yes.
Engelman?
Yes.
And then the third is just a motion to reallocate $100,000 from 2191-760-790, which is Police Department Other Capital Outlay, to 2191-760-740, Machinery Equipment and Furniture, and this will accommodate the Exxon Enterprises equipment purchase.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
That's it. Police?
One quick item that's not on the agenda. Request approval for training for Seth Miracle to attend the new detective criminal investigations course at Columbus Police Department Training Center, August 19 through the 23rd, 2024, at a cost of $1,310. This includes course fee, lodging, and meals.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Player?
I request appropriations not to exceed $2,250 for emergency repairs for Squad 37 to repair the air compressor from general maintenance. I contacted Monique last week to get the approval because it's above it, because it does take several days to get some of the parts in.
So moved.
Second.
And this was, to remind you both, we had to do repairs for similar, but it was the different squad, not the same.
Yes, it was, it was the other squad. This is the one we are repaying, that we just approved the purchase for and replacing in a couple of years.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only other thing, I just want to say, we had 12 applicants, and we began scheduling the interviews.
Okay.
Any else, Chief?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mike?
Just one quick update. Finally got a call from R&amp;R Truck Sales. Our truck should be finally going in the build, so we'll be pushing the build from JUDCO over to Brian here shortly, you know, just to get approval on the pricing through Sourcewell, so about all I have.
Okay, while Mike is up, we got some rough numbers for parking lot repair for consideration. So to do the whole lot, we're looking at, we're probably in the ballpark, about 500,000 to do the portion of the entryway and up to PD, as we had booked at before. We're estimating around 250,000. So.
Was that, refresh my memory, was that to the end of the building, the police department?
It goes to, I think, right around the stairs, the entry stairs.
Okay.
As I recall.
Yeah, I think so. I had to look at that map, but yeah.
Do we have to redo those stairs also?
Yes.
So you would have to pick that out? So, can I, can I get back to you on those?
Absolutely.
That's just rough figures. That's like, kind of what, like, TriMoore came in for bid, and I kind of bumped it up a little bit because obviously TriMoore is pretty low. So it's right around that $120 a square yard is about what we're averaging price-wise, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from Mike? Zoning? Hello, Tom.
Good morning. I have a couple of things. We have two new subdivisions, small subdivisions coming in. The one is called Sanctuary Court. It's across from Arborcrest. And the question there was, the engineer wanted to know if it was necessary to put a street light there because Arborcrest already has one. And Trustee Engelman, myself, we, we told them we would wait for that decision when we saw the ODOT study. So we knew the position of the road and so forth, and we haven't got that yet. So I'll report back on that when we get it. And the other one is Prairie Vista, which is a small subdivision south of Laurel Road on West 130th. And the question there was that that's a private street, and we wanted to make sure the HOA docs indicated that the landscaped island would be taken care of by the HOA. And again, we are waiting for confirmation on that. And the last thing is, as you know, in our senior housing up here in Redwood, it's federal law that 55 and under, as far as demographics, needs to be 20% or under. And we, back when that started, we asked Prime Retail to, Prime Retail, Prime Engineering to send us a report. Well, so far, I've only got two reports. I got it at the end of 2023, for the fourth quarter, the percentage was 19%. And the first quarter of this year, it was 19.7%. And I requested a report for today, and I was told that Prime has, now has a new management company. And they think the reports will come more untimely and more easy to understand, but I don't have a report for the first quarter. So at your next meeting, hopefully, I'll have that. So we're monitoring that, but we really don't have any policing on it. If it, if they go over 20%, it's up to the federal government to get after them, but it'd be good for us to know that before it happens. That's all I have this morning.
Tom, just a question of the 19 and the 19.7%. Is that of total residents living there now versus the total number of units that will be at the end?
Good question. No, it's the number that are living there now. I'll, I'll give you the full report, and then you can see it.
So that means it's, the 19% represents 19% of the total maximum capacity of?
No, I think it's, it's the total of what's there now.
Who's there now?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we need to, just, it'd be good to have the clarification.
Sure. Well, I bet, I can clarify. That's what it is.
There hasn't been any, like, onsite drive-through inspection to, or visits, you know, you probably haven't had the opportunity to go through there and kind of validate what the population looks like or whatever.
Well, we would have no idea of that. We, I mean, we have to depend on the management company because we have, we're not privileged to, you know, food renting. We, we hope the federal government does their job, and we're simply receiving a report.
So, but they're not at 100% capacity, the units, at this point, are they?
Oh, no, no. I think it's, I believe it's 127 units. And they have, what, 160, I believe? 61? That'll show on report. When I get that, the latest quarter report, I'll scan it and send it to everybody, and then I'll report it again when, you know, next meeting.
Because I think it's 117 total units that they have.
117, 117 or 121, something like 117?
We got it down in that.
Oh.
On one of their final meetings, it was 117.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have it right in front of me, but it's not the to, it's not against the total unit. It's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Tom, before you go?
Yeah.
For anyone who might be listening.
I'm sorry.
For anyone who might be listening, yeah, just wanted to let them know that you elected to take a position with another community, and we appreciate all you've done for us.
Oh, well, thank you. I, I leave with mixed feelings because I, I've come to love working with everybody here and, and the Hinkley residents, but I chose not to go full-time. And I have taken a position with Eaton Township, same hours as I have here.
So, thank you for everything you've done, Tom. I'm definitely gonna miss you.
I've, I've loved this job, and it's with very mixed emotions that I'm moving to another township, but.
That's life, right? Bittersweet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we wish you the very best.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Cemetery?
Nothing for cemetery today. So I guess I'll just move into my piece. So number one, I need to put on my glasses. With respect to Tom, I make, I move to accept the resignation of zoning inspector Tom Wilson effective Monday, July 8, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tom has also indicated that after July 8, he would be willing to come back and help with any transition activities. For instance, he was involved with an applicant who'll be at the next BZA hearing. He'd need to testify at that hearing, and anything else that might, you know, maybe like with the senior report or whatever. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve retaining Tom Wilson at his current.
I was thinking of something. And Tom's gonna be opers with Eaton Township.
Oh.
Do you want to hire him at a rate, or his hourly rate is separate, not so much retain him?
Independent contractor?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I know we've had this conversation, but as you're saying it, I'm all of a sudden, I'm thinking of his pension.
Okay, so it's a motion to hire?
To hire him at his hourly rate on an independent contractor basis. That sounds reasonable.
So moved.
I was gonna say, second.
Oh, wait, hey, hang on, hang on, let me make, let me, let me.
Cindy doesn't do that. That's just you and I.
Because I got dates in here. Hold on.
I'm sorry. I know you talked to me about.
Well, right, I think it was even fuzzy this morning, but, but then you're right. Didn't even think about the fact.
This is why you put your glasses on. You knew you were gonna make a tie.
I know. So, and I, so I would make a motion. Can, can we start over?
Yes.
To hire Tom Wilson at his current prorated hourly rate of, and you can validate this, but I think it's 22.74, $22.74.
That sounds good.
As an independent contractor on and as needed basis between July 9, 2024, to provide transition tasks as may be required, ending no later than August 31, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And thank you to Tom.
Yes.
That's very gracious of him.
He extended that offer, and I gladly accept. So, as the public may be aware, now we've been interviewing for full-time zoning inspector position, and we do have a candidate who interviewed very well and is willing to come over to Hinkley Township and join our zoning department as the zoning inspector. And she's already a zoning inspector with another community. She's has several years of experience. So I would like to make a motion to hire Nicole Blanc into the full-time zoning inspector position with the start date of July 22, 2024, and an hourly pay rate of $26.50.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks to everybody who came and interviewed for that role. Nicole was very impressive.
She was. And that's all I have.
Okay. I would like to make a motion for SiteGround website hosting plan renewal for a two-year term renewal cycle at a cost of $599.76. This is a savings of, if we only did a one year, it saves us $120 to do the two-year.
Oh, second bit?
All in favor?
Aye. I have on my agenda the single hauler trash bid discussion. I'm not sure if you're both ready to do that yet. I did just forward you specs from another community that I received literally as we were coming into this meeting. So I thought that might be something better to kind of compare, something that was just used this year versus what the township used in 2019. So we can table that until August, when you are back in town, if you're both comfortable with that.
Works for me.
Okay, the electronic sign discussion. I don't think you were copied on this email this morning, but we don't have the apples-to-apples comparison yet for using that Peachtree foam base that we had discussed. It should be ready, he said, by tomorrow, so that's something that we can discuss and possibly make a decision on for our next meeting later in the month. I'm assuming it's going to be very close. The two companies will be very close. Not sure if I copied you both on this. I think I did. When he came back and he said it is a lifetime training also, so both companies are offering the same options of lifetime training. So when we have new staff, new administration, they will also train the new people on the signs so that we can use that. They did come back. Becker Signs responded with the cellular service questions that we had had them, and that is an additional charge after the first five years, which comparing Becker to Brilliant, Brilliant was actually a little bit of savings with the cellular plans. So should have more to actually give hard numbers in the next two weeks, but they're both very, very close.
Okay.
And then just a couple of things I wanted to ask the board's thoughts on and gain permission would be, I would like to make on the Hinkley Township Facebook page, I would like to make a post reminding everybody with the details of our first Fourth of July parade. And per our social media policy, I want to ensure that everyone is okay with making a post about that.
Works for me.
Very good.
I would also like to, after the parade, post some pictures of the first parade. I would like to post pictures of the people participating in the parade with a signed consent form, that they, we do something similar when we have the police association events, that they sign a consent allowing their photos to be used on social media.
That sounds, that's probably a good idea.
Okay. And I wanted to make, create an event on the Facebook page for the August movie night. I would also like to place it out as a question that, again, it can be shared, so comments can be in the shares, but not on the official page of, I'm looking at, I have quotes for two different movies, and that would be Trolls Band Together, which is a newer release, and Sting. I'm sure you both have very strong feelings about one movie or the other, but I kind of wanted to put it out for a vote for the community between those two movies, which are both rated G and family movies. I know what my vote goes to, but let's put it out to the community. So wanted to make sure that you were both comfortable with that. And that movie night will be cosponsored with our police association and First Day School Supplies.
Very nice.
Much appreciated.
Yes.
Welcome. So are you done about Facebook? Because I wanted to bring up something about Facebook.
I am, and just one more thing, just kind of looking towards the future. The Church, Our Lady of Grace, did grant permission for the township to use their parking lot for that October drive-in movie that we had discussed. I just got that email last night. So the church did grant us permission. I've already spoken with Mark Staron, the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and he was on board with that. And that would be sponsored by the Hinkley Holiday Market. They would be paying for the movie rights for that movie. So.
Nice.
Kind of.
Nice.
Like fun community events coming.
So like, we, we put the trustees' corner out there on Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, when you read it in print, it's easy to scan to see what you want to read. When you post it, the whole thing in one post, it's a lot to read, and if the first paragraph doesn't grab you, you may not read the rest.
Do you mean that people just read the headline?
Yes, just like the headline.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe breaking up the paragraphs as separate posts or headlining them somehow or something to, you know, make sure people actually read the contents because one big block.
Okay, so if I'm understanding you correctly, you are saying kind of like one topic?
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
And then that is still going back to, which I have been talking to Lynn about, kind of creating on the website a tab of hot topics, that if you click on the link on Facebook, it will take you back to the website. So you get, you get all of it on the website, but you just kind of get that snippet on, on social media so that it grabs their attention. If they want to learn more about it, they can go to the website. Is that along the lines?
I mean, that, that would work. I, I think some, something to make it so that the people catch the topics, and, you know, if they're interested, they can read it, and they will read it, as opposed to it being down, you know, down the page where you just don't even get to it because the first couple topics don't, aren't of interest or something like that. So just trying to.
It was, it was long. It was long. You're absolutely right.
I mean, it was great, but it was long.
Yeah.
Just to, you know, because like people, it's like, give me the headline. If I want more, I'll, I'll read.
It looks much shorter in the Hinkley Record than it does as a.
It does. That's what I realized, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So that just.
If we are in agreement? Okay. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Received the Bethany Lane contract back from the prosecutor's office. It's ready to sign, and so at the end of the meeting, I'll request your signatures on both copies. And I'll give them the mic for moving down the line to TriMoore. I also spoke to the prosecutor's office about the AED donation, and as long as it's donated to us, that's actually the best way for us to handle it. Then they're out of it, and we have full control over it, as well as looking at maintenance and whatnot. I will move to accept the donation of an automated external differrerator, AED, from the Recreational Association of Island.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will let Taylor Spear know that we've done that. He is out of town. He said, just let him know, and he'll make arrangements to deliver it to us, chief.
Very good.
Very good. Speaking of Ra, they have, they came to us with a request to assist with a youth ballfield renovation. After discussion with Martha, even considering the work that we've done, that came out of a different line. So the, we have the full $10,000 for recreational sites available to us. I asked that the landscaping company that's doing the renovation provide a quote directly to Hinkley for the $10,000 for that portion and break out the remainder in a separate invoice that went to Ra. And I think that's the best way to handle that. If we're in agreement, well, I'll move to adopt a resolution to hire Lewis Landscaping and Nursery Incorporated to perform infield conditioning and renovation for youth ballfield two in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Second, do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You, you said resolution. Did you want a motion or a resolution? Motion's fine.
Okay, the last one we did was resolution, that's why I did it.
Whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, a motion's fine.
Okay.
Second is amended?
Second is amended.
All in favor?
Aye. Just to piggyback on that, on the Ra conversation, I noticed, well, I've noticed before, but it kind of stuck out in my mind yesterday, was the drive at Coback. We might want to think about doing something to that drive next year with some of the funds because it is not in the best shape.
Never is. Generally cold patch it every year, but that's a long way to go, so.
Is it an asphalt base? Is it?
Who knows? That was way before me, so I'm not even sure what's underneath that, so.
I thought it was just gravel.
Don't think so.
Maybe we can go in and scarify and put down a stone base and compact it and just treat it like that?
And you can, but then again, it's like, so is it our, is it our responsibility all the way out to 130th, or is it not ours till we get back to the ballfields?
I don't think it is, and that's, that's.
That's where, that's the.
Until the gate to the ballfields.
And the worst of that drive is always.
Is before it.
Before all that. So that's why.
Coback is always indicated. They kind of like to keep it that way because it slows down. No, I mean, truly.
Built-in road bumps.
It slows down the traffic coming from the ballfields.
It definitely does.
Yeah, so I know a couple times, the service department has provided grindings, a resource to grindings, to the owners of Coback for that, but Mike is absolutely correct. Our only responsibility is east of the gate, I guess, as the direction we're going in.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay.
OPWC round 39 is in process, and it's a grant. So I talked with Mike, and I sent both of you the letter, as careful as you. And it's to continue the work up in Brookside. We identified the next phase of it that we'd like the county engineers to consider. So if we're in agreement, I'd like to sign this letter and send it over to them for consideration, and then we'll.
And then we'll hear back from them whether or not they support it and then go down the application process with, uh, OPWC.
For a grant, not a loan?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And the last thing is, uh, I did speak with the contractor doing the east wall renovation project. Uh, the lag is in getting, and we always knew that, the windows and the door for over there, so. He, uh, is confident that they'll be getting those shortly and the estimated completion is mid-August if everything goes well. Okay, I have nothing else. Anyone else? Trustees?
No.
Nope.
Anyone from the public? Okay, nothing else for the good of the order. I will move to adjourn at nine oh one AM.
Second.
Second of my act. All in favor?
Aye.